Good morning, good morning everyone. God bless you. Thank you for joining us for morning Bible study. We pray that it is well with each and every one of you. Let us bow in prayer this morning. Father, we thank you for your goodness, your mercy, and your love. God, we thank you for waking us up this morning. We thank you Father God, that it is as well as it is with our souls. We ask that you bless every listening ear this morning, far and near. We ask Father God, that you bless every family member, and that you keep them safe and protected in your arms. Father God, we thank you that the blood of Jesus still works, and that you are working some things out in our lives, in which we are so glad. Lord, thank you for yet another day. As we come now to study your word, God, we ask that you open our hearts, our minds, that you open our Bibles, that we might be able to consume that which you are giving to each of us. And then Lord, as we learn, please don't let us be selfish and keep it to ourselves. Let us then go out and share your word with all that we see. It is in Jesus' name that we pray now, with thanksgiving. And those who believe, all joined me and said, "Amen." Amen. We've been studying the book of Job, and I hope and pray that you are excited about it as I am, that we are learning some things about this man, about his integrity, about his character, more importantly, about his faith, that he held on to that faith. In the midst of trials, tribulations, struggles, disappointments, Job still kept the faith. And this morning, we are starting in chapter 16. And as you open your Bibles to Job, the 16th chapter. Today, hopefully, we will get through 16, 17, and 18. It begins by simply saying, and Job is now answering Eliphas. Eliphas had given a response. And so, in Job 16, we're going to learn some things here as we are reading this 16th chapter. Then Job answered and said, "I have heard many such things." He's referring to Eliphas. "I've heard many such things. Miserable comforters are ye all." Job is saying, "All of you, you three friends, you've come, you've sat with me, for seven days, you've sat with me, day and night, and now listen to what you're saying. You are all miserable comforters." Have you ever had someone, a friend, or just an acquaintance, who you're going through something, they're not able to help you? They sit down, and they're trying to find mockery of you. They're criticizing you. They're not bringing you comfort. There are times, beloved, when we just need a comforting ear, not a judgmental statement. And so, verse two says, verse three, "Shall vain words have an end? Or what emboldenment be that thou answereth? I also could speak as ye do. If your soul were in my soul's stead, I could heap up words against you and shake mine head at you; but I would strengthen you with my mouth, and the moving of my lips should assage you..." I'm sorry. "...and the moving of my lips should assage your grief." Now, in these verses one through five, Eliphas had represented Job's discourses as unprofitable and nothing to the purpose. Job is here giving him the same character, those he's expecting to have them retorted. It is easy, it is endless, but what good does it do? What good is it doing for him doing these things? And so, when we look and we see this word that says "assage", which is a word that we don't commonly use, that means it is relieved, or ease, or soothed, or a calming type thing. And so, then we get to, whatever our brothering sorrows are, we ought to be sympathetic. We ought to make it our own, because we are our brother's keeper. And this friend, Eliphas, is not doing that. And so, now we read verses six through 16. "Though I speak, my grief is not assaged; and though I forbear, what am I eased? But now he hath made me weary. Thou hast made desolate all my company; and thou hast filled me with wrinkles, which is a witness against me; and my leanness rising up in me beareth witness to my face." I'm sitting here, I'm wrinkled up, because I'm not understanding what you guys are doing to me. "He teareth me in his wrath, who hated me; he gnashes upon me with his teeth; mine enemy sharpeneth his eyes upon me; they have gapped upon me with their mouth; they have smitten me upon the cheek reproachfully; they have gathered themselves together against me. God hath delivered me to the ungodly and turned me over into the hands of the wicked. I was at ease, but he hath broken me afunder; he hath also taken me by my neck and shaken me into pieces and set me up for his mark. His arches compass me roundabout; he cleaveth my reins afunder and doth not spare; he poureth out my gall upon the ground; he breaketh me with breach upon breach; he runneth upon me like a giant. Hat I have sewed sackcloth upon my skin and defiled my horn in the dust." Verse 16, "My face is foul with weeping, and on my eyelids is the shadow of death." Here is a doleful representation of Job's grievances. What reason we have to bless God? That we are not making such complaints. Even good men, when in troubles, have much ado not to entertain hard thoughts of God. Eliphas had represented Job as un-humbled under his affliction. Job says, "No, I am still humble. I know better things. The dust is now the fattest or the fittest place for me." In this, he reminds us of Christ, who was a man of sorrows and pronounced these blessed that mourn, for they shall be comforted." Job is like, "I have not forgotten. I have not forgotten what I know is going to come to pass for me. I know who God is. I know the power and the worth of God; and nothing is going to change or transform me from my beliefs." So now, we read verses 17 through 22. "Not for any injustice in my hands; also my prayer is pure. O earth, cover not thou my blood; and let my cry have no place. Also now, behold, my witness is in heaven, and my record, hallelujah, is on high. My friends scorn me; but mine eye poureth out tears unto God. Oh, that one might plead for a man with God as a man pleaded for his neighbor! When a few years are come, then I shall go the way whence I shall not return." These verses shows us that Job's condition was very, very much so deplorable. But he had the testimony of his conscience for him, that he never allowed himself in any gross sin. No one was ever more ready to acknowledge sins or infirmity. Eliphas had charged him with hypocrisy in religion, but he specifics, or specifies in his prayer, the great act of religion, and professes that in this, he was pure, though not from all infirmity. He had a God to go to, who he doubted not took full notice of all his sorrows. Those who pour out tears before God, though they cannot plead for themselves by reasons of their defects, have a friend to plead for them, even the son of man; and on him, we must ground all our hopes of acceptance with God. To die is to go the way whence we shall not return. We must all of us, very certainly and very shortly, we must go this journey. We're all going to die. We've heard it in Job. We've heard it said numerous times, "Man born of a woman." We know our days are numbered. We know our days are short. We know that we are not going to be here forever. But we need to still have faith and hope in God. And the blessing that I see in all of this is that we should try to make sure that the time we do have on this earth, that we are glorifying God, and that we are trying to help someone else. We must remember that in the New Testament, when we speak on Matthew, it tells us that the greatest commandment of all is to love the Lord thy God with all thy heart, with all thy mind, with all thy soul; and the second is like unto it, to love thy neighbor as thyself. What better time right now than in this COVID virus that's going on, this coronavirus, COVID-19, that we take time to be there for our neighbor, to be there for our brother, to assist those that we know might be in need? Amen? Not a time now to walk by, but a time to stop and be that good Samaritan. So when we look at these, we're learning that Job is talking to him, and he's answering him, that when a few years are to come, he said, "Then I shall go the way whence I shall not return." I know my time is almost over, but when I'm looking at this body and all the things that have endured, and the flesh that's coming, you can see the bones of my body. My sores are deep. I'm suffering here. I know that time will come, but still, I will glorify my God. Amen. I pray that all of us will have that type of blessed assurance, that we will be able to glorify our God. Amen. Amen. And so, as we are now going to chapter 17, we are looking. What we're going to do in this chapter 17, in the book of Job, we are going to learn that in verses one through nine, Job makes an appeal from man to God. He's going to make an appeal. And then, we're going to learn in chapters 10 through 16, that his hope is not in life, but his hope is going to be in death. So as we are looking at these chapters, we're looking here, chapter 17, we're going to begin reading together today, beloved, verses one through nine. "My breath is corrupt; my days are extinct; the graves are ready for me. Are there not mockers with me? And doth not mine eye continue in thy provocation? Lay down now; put me in a surety with thee, who is he that will strike hands with thee? For thou hast hid their heart from understanding; therefore shalt thou not exalt them. He that speaketh flattery to his friends, even the eyes of his children shall fail. He hath made me also a byword of the people; and aforetime I was as a tabernacle. Mine eye also is dim, my reason of sorrow; and all my members are as a shadow. Upright men shall be astonished at this; and the innocent shall steer up himself against the hypocrite." Verse nine, "The righteous also shall hold on his way; and he that hath clean hands shall be stronger and stronger." Job in this, Job 17, verses one through nine, Job reflects upon the harsh censures that his friends have passed upon him. And looking upon him as a dying man, he appeals to God. Our time is ending. It concerns us carefully to redeem the days of time and to spend them in getting ready for eternity. We see the good use the righteous should make of Job's afflictions from God, from enemies and from friends, instead of being discouraged in the service of God. By the hard usage, this faithful servant of God meets with him. They should be made to hold, to proceed, and preserve their in. "Those who keep their eyes upon heaven as their in will keep their feet in the paths of religion as their way. Whatever difficulties and discouragements they may, will meet, they still know that there is an expected end." So now, as we are looking at Job's 10 through 16, remember that his hope is not in life, but his hope is in death. And it reads, "But as for you all, do ye return and come now; for I cannot find one wise man among you. My days are past; my purposes are broken off; even the thoughts of my heart; they change the night into day; the light is short because of darkness. If I wait, the grave is mine house; I have made my bed in darkness; I have said to corruption, 'Thou art my father;' to the worm, 'Thou art my mother and my sister.' And where is now my hope? As for my hope, who shall see it?" Verse 16, "They shall go down to the bars of the pit, when our rest together is in the dust." Here, Job's friends had pretended to comfort him with the hope of his return to a prosperous estate. He here shows that those do not go wisely about the work of comforting the afflicted, who fetch their comforts from the possibility of recovery in this world. It is our wisdom to comfort ourselves and others in distress with that which will not fail, the promise of God, his love and peace and his grace, and a well-grounded hope of eternal life. See how Job reconciles himself to the grave? Do you see how he goes back, and he says to them, "And if I wait, the grave is mine house; I have made my bed in the darkness." He's letting us know. He's reconciling himself back to the grave. Let this make believers willing to die. Amen. We know that we're going to. But we as believers know that in our death, we shall have eternal life. So we become, and we're in a win-win situation. If I live, I'm with Christ. And if I die, to be absent from the body is to be present with the Lord. A win-win situation. So why should not we go willingly when our Father calls? Why should we not say, "Lord, you know, I'm ready"? Accept what the inevitable is. Let us remember that our bodies are allied to corruption, the worm and the dust that they speak of. And let us seek for that living hope, which shall be fulfilled, when the hope of the wicked shall be put out in darkness, that when our bodies are in the grave, our souls may enjoy the rest reserved for the people of God. Do you have a reservation this morning? I pray you have a reservation with God. Amen. Now, let's look quickly at chapter 18 as we close out this morning. We're going to quickly move to Job 18. All right. As we move quickly to Job 18, let us begin, and let us realize that in Job 18, Bildad now reproves Job in chapter 18. Bildad is going to reproach Job, and we're going to find out that in verses now, five to 10, the ruin attends to wicked. It's going to be a wickedness. And then, in verses 11 to 21, as we hasten, it's going to be the ruin of the wicked. So chapter 18 starts out. "Then answered Bildad, the shoot, and said, 'How long will it be ere ye make an end of words? Mark, and afterwards we will speak: wherefore we are counted as beasts and reputed vile in your sight. He teareth himself in his anger. Shall the earth be forsaken for thee? And shall the rock be removed out of his place?' You see, Bildad had before given Job good advice and some encouragement, but here, he uses nothing but rebuke. And he declares his ruin. And he concluded that Job shut out the providence of God from the management of human affairs, because he would not admit himself to be wicked. Now, as we read quickly verses five through 10, we're going to see that the ruin attends to wickedness. "Yea, the light of the wicked shall be put out; and the spark of his fire shall not shine; the light shall be dark in his tabernacle; and his candles shall be put out with him; the steps of his strength shall be straightened; and his own counsel shall cast him down; for he is cast into a net by his own feet, and he walketh upon a snare. The gen shall take him by the heel; and the robber shall prevail against him." Verse 10, "The snare is laid for him in the ground and a trap for him in the way." Bildad describes the miserable condition of a wicked man, in which there is much certain truth. If we consider that a sinful condition is a sad condition, and that sin will be men's ruin if they do not repent. So that part would be true, if sin is, and if man doesn't repent. But did Job sin? That's the question. And so, in this transgression of an evil man, there is a share for himself, and God is preparing for his destruction. Okay, and we're going to see here how the sinner runs himself into the snare. But let us be mindful, Job had not sinned. Let us conclude with verses 11 through 21. "Terrors shall make him afraid on every side and shall drive him to his feet; his strength shall be hunger-bitten; and destruction shall be ready at his side. It shall devour the strength of his skin; even the firstborn of death shall devour his strength; his confidence shall be rooted out of his tabernacle; and it shall bring him to the king of terrors. It shall dwell in his tabernacle, because it is none of his. Brimstone shall be shattered or scattered upon his inhabitation; his roots shall be dried up beneath; and above shall his branch be cut off; his remembrance shall perish from the earth; and he shall have no name in the street; he shall be driven from light into darkness and chased out of the world. He shall neither have son nor nephew among his people, nor any remaining in his dwellings. They that come after him shall be astonished at his day as they that went before were frightened." Last verse, 21. "Surely such are the dwellings of the wicked; and this is the place of him that knoweth not God." Bildad here, these verses 11 through 21, describes the destruction wicked people are kept for in the other world, and which in some degree often seizes them in this world. The way of sin is the way of fear and leads to everlasting confusion, of which the present terrors of an impure conscience are earnest, as Cain and Judas. We talk about here, the judgments of God follow the wicked man after death in this world as a proof of the misery that his soul is in after death, and as an earnest of that everlasting shame and contempt to which he shall rise in the great day. We must be reminded that Jesus ever lived to deliver all who trust in Him. That's why He goes to the cross for our sins, and therefore bear them up, the suffering believers. We shall for a little time... We shall for a little time have sorrow, but, beloved, our Savior will see us again. Our hearts shall rejoice, and this joy that we will have, no man, no woman can take it away. I'm so glad to know that the Lord we serve, he said, surely such are the wi, the dwellings of the wicked, but this is the place of him that knoweth not God. We who know God, we know what is there for us. Amen. So next week, we're going to do chapters nineteen. We're going to hear Job's response. And we're going to read chapters nineteen, chapter twenty, uh, talking about, uh, Zophar's speech now. Then we're going to read twenty-one, which is Job's reply or his response. And then, uh, so we're going to do nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and let's even do chapters twenty-two, amen? So we can find out, uh, what these, uh, people are saying to Job and how Job is going to respond. I want you to be mindful that we serve a great God and that everything is in the hands of God. God is in control. Some of you are sick, I know some members have had surgery. Some people are in and out of hospitals. Some people, yes, are unemployed and have applied, I'm sure, for, for unemployment. However, sometimes the unemployment is turned down. But I want you to trust in the Lord with all of your heart. Lean not on your own understanding, but in all of your ways acknowledge Him, and He shall direct your path. We're going to be looking for you on this Sunday morning. Tell all of your friends, mount, tell your friends, your family to tune in on this Sunday. This Sunday is Mother's Day, and you want to be present at eleven AM live for your Mother's Day message. Trust God. This week, if you haven't, contact your mother, you don't have to wait for Mother's Day. Call and just tell them that you love them. God bless you and may the peace, grace, mercy, and love of God, may it keep you. Amen.